Are the numbers increasing on the end?
I'm just wondering when Jared calls in, where does that pop up on that?
It should pop up on the screen. That's what it did for us before we tested.
Decision will be about five minutes away. Okay, if you could call the meeting order, please. Everybody please rise and face a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Pillar, would you please lead us in a prayer?
Everyone, please bow their heads. Dear God, my Father, we thank and praise you for the glorious day that you gave us today. We pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that the discussions, the decisions, and the actions that are made are pleasing to you. We just pray that you watch over all of us and all of those represented in the city of Hazen. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, reading and approval in minutes from the last meeting, please.
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Jared, can you hear us? Jared, are you there?
Yep, Jared, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you. Thanks for joining. Okay, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Pillar and a second by Stern. Do we have an addition to the agenda, you said?
I think so.
Tabby or Angie?
Kimmy and Angie.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so we'll put Kimmy and Angie in it. That'll be six D.
Okay, well, I'm in my motion to add that six D, Kimmy and Angie went at.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, Jared, engineers report. You're up.
Okay, all right, all right. Anybody here, here, can you show my vehicle? You know, we normally try to attend the third Monday meeting and have touch on normal items. But I have one item that they say it'll be moved in late night so we can just advance on the water treatment project. Otherwise, mainly everything else is just for implementation. So starting with the water project, you guys hold intentions for some time so we can run some of these improvements or this funding. What I have is with the can contract, we've kept that open. They've done some water main work, hydrating little means we actually ran some old water main repairs through that contract as well. The item I have approval, and I apologize if I'm not sure if you got our report or not. Did you hear it? Did you get it?
I don't believe so. No.
Okay. I know what you might not have, but what I have is a quote from quality asphalt to do the asphalt patching on that project. There's actually seven, no, excuse me, five additions in town that either have a break or a leak or something to work in town that came up that was planned for the water project. So what we'd like to do is we got a quote for quality asphalt and that patching. So because you have asphalt, there's one in one of those turner shops, one in one of Stevens Curve, one in Union Bank, one in the Capstone Church, and the one at Seven Second Avenue. And so it's asphalt patching, it's $13,000, $11,000, six steps. Take care of those five patches. It's actually a really, really good price for asphalt patching. Now, we're running through the water project. It gets cased up, but I could probably see in some additional patches if you wanted some. But this isn't the word in the engineer's report and for the quote, the asphalt patching. If we intended to load this water project with cans in July, I need to locate the patching so we can get that done.
Jared, is that dollar a month? Yeah. Jared, is that dollar a month the city's responsibility after being funneled through the project? Or is that prior to it being funneled through the project, the $13,011?
No. No, no, prior. We would have to pay for that, to cover the list.
Okay.
Those one patches I gave you.
That is why we want to run it through the chain of the can.
Okay, Dave has one more.
That one patch that was missed should be the one at the Union Bank. I did give the dimensions, but maybe that one got overlooked. I can get them back to him.
Yeah, Jared, do you have the one for, by Union Bank that was right in the driveway? Or is that when you said Union State?
Well, Union State should be.
Yep, I have five of them. It says, Mr. Rand, right, he ran out there. We got the turner shop, we got Stevens Curve, a Union Bank, and a Capstone Church, and a one on the corner of Seventh Street, Second Avenue. With the five.
Cheese Factory, the one Cheese Factory.
There should be another, there should be another one too with the, at the Union Bank.
Seventh and Second is over there by the cheese factory.
Is that one in Union?
I said, Union Bank.
No.
No. The Union Bank up by the Hope.
So there's one by both banks.
Is that it?
Yep.
So there's a Union Bank and Union Bank?
Yes. Dave will get that information to you.
Okay, fair. If we're gonna, yeah, okay. I just need to let them know what the exact quantity of this man had bringing up my bits. Do it. These are pretty small patches. So again, what I'm asking for is approval to, um, excuse me. For this work for quality asphalt, and then we will actually process game in this through the county. Get the meeting in two weeks. So I need to get them to go ahead and do it. So if you want to come up with a bit for that adding a patch, we'll just pay them based on the unit price, $8 per square foot.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve this with the addition of the one at Union Bank.
Here we have a motion by Weidrich.
Second at.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call. Uh, Weidrich?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Obenauer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
All right, then, just, just up to you. As far as the project goes, I'd really like to follow this up, meeting. I don't know if it can happen for two weeks if that section isn't done yet or done. The substance meeting happened, but we generally have to punch those divided. We have a double check, triple check. David or Scott have elected water. We got some double, triple checks there to make sure everything's safe. We have a little work to do there, but for all intent purposes, our job, our intent is to close this water project pretty quick. Unless you decide not to, but I think the water project, I mean, funding source, we've had it built about three years, so I think there needs to be some control.
Okay.
Other thing I have is, you know, the sewer televisions are not out of report yet on the, or the televisions need paid yet. Generally, what you can expect is that, you know, we use the card brand to get the televisions done. The deliverables, you can engineer it for the MBS, so you'll get a copy of savings. We have to watch them. They would be called the facility plan. That goes to the health department and it goes to the utility, there's where no addition your sewer sources in. So you can expect that that station in July, expedition date, that is where they're at. In the subdivision, kind of on the west side of town, network is scheduled to start next week. We have a break on Monday for them. It's either Wednesday or Thursday. I can't recall. I just put it on a calendar list. I believe there'll be hiring, 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 students, construction, engineering, health, there will be obviously. But I have not necessarily been told yet or not yet, but I think I'll have that by tomorrow. Otherwise, because you don't have, um, I, my, my, I've talked a little bit about the cap room plan. Um, you guys, and we went through a pretty big effort this last year together, some projects. There's a web link somewhere out there that it's a way to get your cap room plan online within a system. I'll kind of go through that in a couple of weeks. You're, you think about it, your last cap room plan, that is, did comp plan, and it does well. On a cheap sheet paper, it can get outdated pretty quick, and I'm afraid this is might also. We don't look at it or don't use it, and there's a, there's a way to, um, just convert it into a kind of online system. I think Monty might be able to hear your meeting and bring it up on the screen. Have your, kind of work if you have it out, but it's a couple thousand. I'll present it. I'll go through it at the next meeting. He'd need to help out on that, um, robots. But anyways, he's not there. I'm not gonna get into it. We've probably talked more on it. And I'll, I'll plan to go over there in two weeks.
Okay. All right.
So I have, but I can, uh, other than a little slide, we got together that alley paving and I think, Mr. Evans comes on me, people about a lot, kind of waiting to hear if there's any desire to do that. Three years now, you're not, I'm concerned.
Okay. Any questions for Jared? All right, Jared, thank you. Appreciate the updates.
All right, I'll stand you for about 10 minutes.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving down to five B, bids for a water treatment plant. We received no bids for the treatment plant, which we kind of expected that may happen. So at this point, then, we will need to determine if we want to have a realtor put a sign out front and then start, have that person market that facility at a broader spectrum than, than it would be for the bid process. So when Monty gets back, we will, we will start addressing that so we can get, get it listed. And, you know, we did, you know, we did have a realtor, you know, do all the pictures, do the comp analysis with several other commercial buildings in Mercer County and in McLean County, so, and with the full description. And I don't know if anybody's, if you want to see this, I'll have it here after the meeting if you want to see it. But we will, we'll start that process then, as soon as we can. All right. Moving down to requests of citizens, six A through D. And six A is the parent concern group relating to children. So who is, who is gonna be? Catherine, are you the spokesperson?
I'm it.
Lucky girl.
Great, hi, that's my lucky be. Am I able to read the letter and submit it to you afterwards and not have it? I mean, she, they understand that it could potentially be in the darkness, but there's no reason why I have to say names during, write on YouTube.
Um, you can read the letter and then submit the letter to us, right, Mark? And then, but the, the name will be included on the letter. Yep.
I've already spoken, um, Hazen Stars, so. All right. So basically, there's a few parents and sisters that do have concerns regarding some situations that have happened. We do, obviously, we do not come here lighthearted. It's not easy. And it's also can definitely put a bullseye on our, on ours and our family's backs. So please do take that into consideration. One of the incidents that we like to discuss is something that did happen at a school. There was a parent that was not permitted to see the children there, and things kind of escalated. And they kind of had issues with how it was handled. So I will just start. Also, this father has quite the criminal record to take into consideration. This is why there is concern. Unlawful possession of drugs, disorderly conduct, several simple assaults, burglary, false report to law enforcement, refusing to halt carrying concealed firearms, terrorizing, simple assault, domestic violence, protection order violation. It goes on and on. Reckless endangerment, ingesting a controlled substance, interfering with telephone during emergency calls. I do have a print off if you would like that. So with that in consideration for the background, I will go ahead and read the letter. Please bear with him and try and make sure I don't say any names in here.
You're fine.
All right. Okay. Unfortunately, we live in a world where any threat to a school must be taken seriously. There's always the assumption that nothing bad will happen in our small town. As an elementary school employee, I can tell you that it is a lazy way of thinking. Side note here, I, I really do try and do my homework, and I was kind of looking more into small-town shootings. Like, does it happen? Or is it more urban? And I was kind of surprised to find out that of the 10 deadly school shootings in the U.S., one took place in a town fewer than 75 residents, and most of them happened 50,000 or less. So it's not something that, it doesn't happen here. It doesn't happen in small towns. It can. And it's, you know, they talked about the reason sometimes why it happens is because there's losing actual stick-ons. You know everyone. Also, the great thing about, you know everyone, but sometimes you know things that people don't want you to know about them. And so things can escalate there. Again, to this employee, we are trained to recognize danger. We are trained to lock down our schools. And we are trained on how to keep our students safe if anyone ever poses a threat to our schools. We are trained on these things for a reason. The chance of anything happening in Hazen may be very small, but the fact is, there is always a chance, no matter where we live or how small the town. When an instance like the one on 5-9 happens, it should be treated with seriousness and concern until evidence says otherwise. When asked to write a letter about my personal experience, I did not hesitate. I can only state the facts about my interactions with, I'll just say, police officer on May 9. Although my opinions are very strong, keep in mind, this is the first and only impression I have of this police officer. I do believe he is a very nice man, but his handling of the situation on 5-9 couldn't have been poorer. When an angry parent came into a elementary school on 5-9, I knew almost immediately that the situation was not going to go well. The father was volatile and demanding to see his daughter. He told me he had just got out of prison. I knew there was a court order requiring supervised visitation, and that he was not legally allowed to see his children without the proper supervisors. He wanted to see his daughter and was not going to take no for an answer. He paced around the office, kept repeating that he would see his daughter, and the school could not stop him. He was very on edge and very escalated. To say I was terrified is an understatement. In the blink of an eye, I felt responsible for every adult and student in that building. When his parent threatened, threatened to call the police, I welcomed his decision. And while he was doing that, I called a principal who was on his way to attract me. I tried to keep my voice low and my words calm so that I wouldn't escalate the father any further. Our principal also called the police to ensure a quick response. I remember hoping that the police would be there very quickly. I can't give an exact timeframe because I was trying quietly to get the word out to our teachers to stay in the rooms, and I was seeking help from a coworker to try to call him down. Our efforts went nowhere, and when he walked into the hallway, I instantly went into a panic. We have all seen the devastations caused to schools across the country by angry, grudge-holding people. Every bad thought you can think that was going through my mind. And when he looked at me and said, "If you all continue," and this is in quotation marks, "to cause problems for me, I will cause problems for all of you," I took that as a direct threat to our school. Our super, our, another employee showed up at the same time as a police officer. The other employer, employee with the school began the initial conversation while I tried to get the word out to teachers to just remain in the rooms for recess. I walked over to join the conversations with this other employee and the police officer and noticed this parent still had access to our school and the situation was being treated with no concern. The officer's suggestion was to call the parent. I let him see his daughter and say hi to her. The other employee and I said, "No." The police officer said it would be okay because he would leave with them. Again, we said, "No. I'm not a police officer, but even I know that bringing a child into an already extremely volatile situation would be a terrible idea." Plus, there was a custody order in place, and none of us knew exactly what is said. I was waiting for this parent to be removed from the property or put into a police car so that I could tell the other employee what happened, or tell the police officer what happened. I was already afraid of this parent and wanted to have a private discussion with the police officer. I asked the police officer if he would step inside the school so we could talk. Since he clearly wasn't going to remove the parent, the parent looked at me and said, in quotations, "You need to stop ignoring me and talk to me like an adult." At this point, I felt the parent's concerns were getting more attention than mine. The police officer stepped inside the school, but the parent stood in the door, holding it open and listened to what I was trying to say. After being threatened and then belittled, I had no interest in talking to the police officer while this parent stood less than a foot from my face. I asked the police officer to shut the door, blocking the parent outside of the school. The police officer asked the parent three times to step back, and a third asked the parent left the doorway and stormed off through the school parking lot. When asked what kind of person we were dealing with, the police officer stated, in quotations mark, "He's a bad dude." I told the police officer that the school was threatened by a formal statement that was never taken, and I was never asked any questions, or principal. And another employee requested charges to be filed, and I was asked to send an email to the police department outlining my experience that day. I was absolutely terrified that this parent was going to come back and harm someone, and I struggled to write a detailed email in that moment. This parent was never arrested, and I'm not even sure if any effort was made that day to locate him. Everyone stayed inside for the remainder of the day as a precautionary measure. I do not like to rock the boat. I would never want to be the one to speak out about a poorly done job. My discipline in the police officer that day was so strong, I feel this letter is necessary. There are so many ways that that situation could have gone terribly wrong. And we got lucky that it ended the way it did. I think, and this is outside the letter, I think sometimes the, excuse me if I'm pronouncing the town wrong, but Uvalde in Texas, small town, is about 15,000, is still fresh in our minds. You know, it's about a year ago, killing 21 people. You can, there's various reports and stuff, but also one thing was that no one took the incident commander. Right? They didn't, like, there was mass chaos, and the chief of police said that he was not the leader that day. So sometimes we just need to maybe take that into consideration. We hate to plan for the worst, but there's a reason why we do it. We don't expect it to ever happen. There was no real concern or sense of urgency from a police officer in any way, and he was not physically prepared to stop any form of attack. There was no check for weapons, no attempt to secure him, and no attempt to stop him from coming back in our school. I can only hope that this can become a teachable moment. No matter the outcome, I'm hopeful that any future circumstances like this will be met with a little more care when it comes to a threat to a school or a school personnel. I would hope that everyone would rather be safe than sorry. Any threat made to the school or school employees should never be taken lightly. Again, we are not coming in here demanding things. We're kind of presenting things that you guys can look into more. There's more things that you could probably look into than us. The next one occurred at the hospital, and I will, they were unable to come. It's an ER provider that got stuck in vismar. Okay, so to whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter as a concerned citizen and as a medical provider for the community. I work in the emergency department. I've had two incidents with the chief, can I say that? A police officer that are concerning. The most recent incident was last week. A patient presented to the ER by private vehicle after he crashed by the vehicle into a tree. He said he was driving. The next thing he knew, he had crashed. He couldn't recall what had happened leading up to the crash. He smelled of alcohol and was apparent to all the nursing staff that provided care for him and the x-ray technician that did his scans. When questioned why the ambulance wasn't called, he stated that the police officer offered to drive him to the ER, but he refused, and his son-in-law brought him. When questioned, the patient admitted he was drinking alcohol but only had a beer. The officer was at the ER briefly but was leaving slow. I asked him if the patient was under arrest for a DUI. He stated that he could not smell alcohol in him, and he denied drinking. I asked him why he didn't have concerns that this patient crashed into a tree in the middle of the day. I told him he could have easily hit a kid on a bike or someone out in the yard. He did not give the gentleman a breathalyzer. I'm very concerned that this officer is considered a first responder, and he did not call the ambulance upon arriving at the scene of the accident. This gentleman had obvious injuries, and this was a significant motor vehicle accident. This person should have been evaluated and transported by EMS as a trauma code. The second incident involved an intoxicated female that was brought into the ER with threats of suicide. She was extremely combative, and the decision was made to transport her to vismar to a psychiatric ward. The same police officer was unable to give any assistance with restraining this woman. I was hit and kicked by this female. I had to physically restrain her and help the other officer carry her out to the squad car because this officer was not in any physical condition to give assistance. I must need certain physical requirements before my job, and I'm very alarmed that a police officer who could not, would not have to do the same. I do truly appreciate our hazen PD, but these incidents have caused me concern. I do truly appreciate our Hazen PD, but these incidents has caused me concern about the job performance of the police. That's not the, you know, first one. We've also had a couple drug drivers on our road. It's kind of, I think, the road to go by after leaving the bar. And people have ended up in people's yards, and we have several children there. So when I hear, like, DUIs are not being taken serious, it is a real concern to my, to those children. I mean, we have, like, forty children in that neighborhood. And it would be horrible if something bad happened, because we weren't doing due diligence. My other concern with this is, you know, she kind of talked about the physical capability. The hospital is a pretty controlled setting. You know, you don't have very unknown variables. You kind of know who's there, you kind of know you're in a safe area. How would this have happened if there's, like, a domestic dispute or some kind of confrontation at a house with a bunch of unknown variables? How would the officer be able to handle that? When I call, I want help, I want someone, and when you're calling, you're expecting someone to come and save you, right? It's a very important job, and I know it's not easy. In this process, I've also been learning that a lot of people, when they do call for help, that they skip over Hazen PD and go to the sheriff's department. I didn't know that you were able to do that. And to me, that kind of is a little alarming. Again, that's something you guys can talk to the sheriff's department, you can discuss with them. I spoke to several of them. There was another one that did actually do training in our Hazen schools about school shootings. And I was told, you know how many Hazen PD you were there? There was zero. I don't know if there was more training or not. Again, that's something that you guys can go ahead and discuss long, freely with these people, but that is concerning to me. I don't know if there's mandatory training, or, I talk a lot with the healthcare field, because that's what I know. I have to do CEUs every single year, and I even have to do on an intruder with a weapon, you know? And you prepare for the worst-case scenario, so that you can be prepared for that. So I don't know if that's something with the Hazen PD, if they do. I don't know if there's a checks and balances. You know, people, it isn't being filled out properly, and it's coming from the leader, basically. Is there a checks and balances? You know, even in hospital setting, your CEO has a checks and balances, you have the board, or the school, you have the school board. So there is a way, we're having some issues here, or we're seeing that, you know, that I'm not doing, you know, I kind of made a mistake. I can get more trained, I can get more orientation, you know? So if these reports aren't being filled out properly, then they can't be prosecuted properly. And there was someone that was going to come today who was not able to come, that that was his big concern. And then with the reporting, again, I don't know exactly how that all, but the KXNet, you know, we're all really happy about number one, safest city, right? And then I kind of looked into that, because I was like, wow, that's awesome, that we have zero murders. In twenty of twenty-two, we had zero murders, rapes, robberies, anger bait assault, burglaries, motor vehicle thefts. But then when I got the Hazen Police Department report for twenty-twenty-two, you know, those numbers are different. We actually did have, I didn't look up rapes or robberies, but the anger bait assault, there was one, breaking and entering, there was three, motor vehicle thefts are two. Again, just giving you that, so that if that's something that you would want to look into, you certainly can. Another officer that was on the drug task force, you know, talked about how that Hazen is kind of becoming a place where the deals are done, because they're not afraid of being caught. Again, that's something that you guys can look into. I just don't want our community to become a safe haven for drug dealers and users, because they feel like they can go ahead and get off on things. So that is something that I just want to bring to your attention, that, again, these are, I'm not bringing this from hearsay. I'm actually talking to, like, officers that have dealt with this, and that is their opinion from the sheriff's department. And again, just the physical capability to perform a job. I do, I know that can be a slippery slope, I know it can be difficult. But are you able to pull from a vehicle if they're in a car accident? Are you able to, you know, help someone in a time of need? And if you can't do that, then, you know, you have to look at, are you safe for the job? You know, I kind of relate back to, like, okay, so you have a doctor who's a great surgeon, and is a great guy, and has done many wonderful things, but he developed Parkinson's, right? He has a chairman, he can no longer do surgeons. It's not safe to do them anymore. But it's hard to do that, but you have to look at the safety of the folks. I do have, like, another one that I can't talk about, but she has a neighbor that has known meth user and alcohol abuse. And I was told by her that I'm scared to call the Hazen PD, because I don't want them to give my name. I don't really have confidence that they're going to protect me. And then after doing this, I found out that, I said, "Well, you can call the sheriff's department if you don't feel that, if they'll give up your name." I mean, it's tough to deal with neighbors, and you're stuck there living with them, and your children out there, and this gentleman will scream obscenities and, like, will go off. And what happens, and I believe he does have mental health issue PTSD as well, but what if he hasn't done it and is shooting this person at his argument, there's no one there? Again, you just have to look at our safety. So I don't really have any answers. I don't know if there's more training or things that we can kind of look into, or courses, I mean, I have to do courses constantly to do. I just kind of look at the bigger picture. Is there a checks and balances for Hazen PD? If we're not doing things properly, you can talk to, I mean, the state's attorney, make sure, you know, are the reports, are they, why are they not being prosecuted if you have the reports not filled out? Or is it just not appropriate?
I'm Brittany Means-See, I came to support everything that she said. I guess following with the next school year, or even daycare, or anything, I think, especially when these parents are in town, or referencing the one that happened at the school this year, something needs to be in place at the school as far as protection. The last day of school, so well after this May ninth incident happened, I dropped my kids off at school. I got back up to about Divide Street, I turned cellphone out a little to go back to my household. And around the corner, I noticed that this parent, because I know who he is, and I know who his roommate is, and what kind of vehicle they drive, because I'm a resident like that, I noticed they're in a van, not wearing many clothes. And it's eight-ten in the morning, and I'm thinking to myself, where are these people going? So being a concerned mom, I followed them right back. They were circling the school. I did not have a cellphone on me. My five-year-old had an old, it's probably an iPhone three, that she has some music on it. Nothing else, just music, and I said, "Wait, hand me, is that in the backseat? Hand me that phone." And she's like, "What?" I'm like, I stopped at the stop sign, I reached back, grabbed the phone, took a picture of the license plate and the van. I followed them around the school. I drove to the cop station first, nobody was there. Again, I didn't have a phone. I saw where he headed to, which was the house I invested for meth just a few days later. Went back home, and I called my friend who works for the sheriff's department. I said, "Who should I call?" The police department, when I show us, "Well, Mark is right behind me. I will go ahead and relay all this information." I also called the school, and just gave them a heads-up, that he would be, you know, he was circling the school that morning. I made several trips back to the school that day. And I didn't see any police presence, which I get, they have another job to do. Even at the school pickup, I kind of circled the school, no cop presence, which I understand to an extent, but at the same time, when this guy has the criminal history that he has, he knows he's not supposed to have contact with his kids. It's just very concerning, he keeps trying. So I think going forward, we kind of need to have a planning process with the school. With the, I don't know if that's more of a school issue or a cop issue, working together, making sure employees know what to do. I mean, I had talked with my own kids of what happens if a kid, if a person comes on the playground. I mean, said parent hasn't seen his kids in a few years. His one daughter blonde curly hair, which fits the description of my kids. He would probably think my kid is his. He probably wouldn't have a clue, so I'm just concerned with that. So something needs to be done with these people around town that can't be law-abiding citizens.
I will add one thing to that, I'm Michelle Garrett. With the school incident, there actually, that day of the school incident, there actually, the school had a restraining order. So he shouldn't have even been driving around there.
I got to stop there, there was no restraining order.
What's her name?
My name's Sheldon Doster, and I am the story of these, I'm the person of these stories, right? So I'm going to start it off by saying, first and foremost, this is why it breaks my heart, is because this personal issue of ours has bled into their lives, right? So this individual who's a menace and a maniac, right? Can we get into the weeds about policies and procedures and all that? Yeah, we can, but we're not going to solve anything, right? But the lack of effort is what I'm feeling, is doing injustice and spilling into other people's homes. So it was not a restraining order, it was a municipal trespass order. It's not allowed on school grounds. There's no footage to that, I believe, correct, just school grounds?
I personally did not draft that, but my understanding is it was a, it was a no trespass.
And that's all that came out of the May ninth incident, that was it. Now, from, from my understanding, and I'm not going to have every fact right about this situation, correct? But from what my understanding was, and this is why I wanted to get into coming here today, what is the policy of the police department as far as getting a police report filled out? What dictates filling one out, and what doesn't? What is the severity? I mean, Joe Schmo doing the U-turn on me, don't do it again. Yeah, okay, we get it, right? But something involving a school and other families, other children? We don't even have a police report. We do now, after a hundred phone calls and weeks of pestering people. There's an incident at the park, with the exact same children, and the exact same parent. Did the police report, tell multiple phone calls and pestering people. So it's almost, are we not listened to? Is it not worth the safety of this community? Because if it was one household with us, it would be one story. You got multiple kids out there, multiple families. This guy, he's a mess. He's got, he's got a sheet longer than we have time to read through tonight. He's done it before, and he'll do it again. And the lack of urgency, it infuriates me. From what I was told, that there was never a police report filled out, was because said officer called the state's attorney, cleared it with him, water's under the bridge, and on their way. Is that, is that policy? That can't be. I have a job, I have paperwork. If I don't fill my paperwork out, I'm going to get questioned about it, right? And if nothing's legally wrong there, and it's done and over with, we can say, check their boxes. And at the end of the day, we can get the police report. Because it's going to help the custody case for the responsible parent in the matter. No one was hurt, no one was injured, there were some words said. Okay, go on, you're right. I'd love to sit here and say that I've lived in this community as long as I have, and I'd like to think that this is Mary Berry as much as the rest of us. But when we have incidences like that, we could have somebody in place that frankly isn't fortified sometimes. When that phone call to nine-one-one gets picked up, and there's not a shred of paperwork on it? It's downright alarming. We've had, I've talked about two, we've had multiple, but we're sick and tired of calling them in, because they ain't going to go anywhere. That's the bottom line, we've proven it time and time again. We can give you a detailed report of dates and times and things that have occurred, but if it's going to go under the bridge, there's no point in calling Hazen Police Department. Because there's about a fifteen percent chance, twenty, twenty-five, whatever the number is, that we're going to get an officer that responds and cares and wants to do something about it. And when the guy at the top doesn't fill the paperwork out, we'll have to do the guys at the bottom.
All of your points are very valid and heard. Obviously, every statement we could talk about, and we could even deliberate each one. However, we are hearing you. And there are things happening. I grew up here too, my children grew up here. Hopefully, some of my grandchildren grew up here. I want it to be a safe place. You're right, Sheldon, it's not Mary Berry. I appreciate you guys all being here and submitting your statements. It's unfortunate, and I can't say a whole lot more right now, but we're glad, I'm glad you guys came.
Is there a policy that dictates what, has a police report filled out?
Sheldon, I don't, I'm pretty sure there probably is, I don't know the policy. And even though Dustin's the police chief, or police portfolio holder, he probably doesn't know it out of hand either, but we could, we could probably find it. We know, we know where it's at. And that would be part of the discussion.
When some, when someone asks for a police report, and they're told that it has to go through an attorney, is that a legal thing?
I don't know what, if it has minors involved in it or not, I don't know. Mark could make a billion white.
I read the state criminal information, and there's nowhere in there that says it has to come from an attorney.
Typically, it doesn't need to come from an attorney, but sometimes there are some delays in processing police reports in as timely of a manner as you might request it, from the standpoint of pretty frequently, if it's an ongoing investigation. And during some of the time, I can say it absolutely was an ongoing investigation, because I was involved with an awful lot of conversations, asking, "What do we do with this situation?" I, if that would have been asked of me, I would have likely urged a delay of any release of a police report till we had formally gone through everything in that context. Because I can tell you with certainty that I spent several hours on the phone, visiting with the parties and visiting with some of the parties in person that were involved in some of the decision-making in that context.
But that answer could be given at that time, correct?
So like a victim of a case, when they ask?
The information of it's under investigation, when we get back to you, that could be provided?
That could be provided, yes.
Dustin, do you have the ER provider that I talked to, that that means you've had the email response? Do you have that, are you able to give that out, or not really?
We have it.
Which I did share with all these commissioners. All of us have seen it, I've seen it, yes, but we'll make sure the attorney gets it too. And I've been, I've, Kim requested a copy of it too. I tried to email it to her, but the email was failing for some reason. So I'm going to try to get a copy to her yet.
Anybody else? Yeah, thank you. If you're willing to stay for the next hour, if you want to listen to anything else on our agenda, but, you know, thanks. And sorry, sorry this is happening. I wish it, I wish.
Well, I mean, I think we wish things could be handled quicker. The situation's the situation, right? But the lack of action and the lack of resolve, kind of, for lack of a better word, spits in the face of the school staff members that were there. And I mean, like I said, we could pick apart technicalities and details all night, right? But.
Do you have those copies for us?
I was kind of writing on one, so I try not to bump into the names. Is that fine, or do you want me to get a new copy for you?
You can submit that, it's fine.
That's fine, okay.
No worries, that's, no problem. Yeah, don't worry, that's not a problem.
Do you want me to make copies now so you can take your journal? Because you have to go learn to be a teacher.
Yeah, this is what we're decked, so it's fine.
And maybe you need to, I'll get another copy.
All right, moving on to six B and C are both raffle permits. One for the Quilters Guild and one for St. Martin's Church.
I'll make a motion to approve both of them at the same time.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, six D. Kimmy, can answer that, you're up. Sounds like a road show.
(laughing). I was gonna have a, I'm telling you, Samuel, talking about. On June tenth, I applied for a grant for arts and community. And I received that grant. And I'm here to ask about, a little sooner than six, because we have a artist that's gonna draw chocolate on the street for this road game. And we have a DJ. There's no alcohol or anything, it's a family event, that's what we're trying to keep it that way. We have a lot of interest. So, I'm here to ask if we could get blessings to block off the street. We're looking at this corner here by the Smiles, Haysen Smiles, to maybe the Water Works, just that little block right there.
Is this the same week that that truck took off?
No, no, this, that's July fifth. This is the same day as the Sizzling Summer Free Market in February. So, it'll be a busy, busy day, we invite you to come and join us, not just for the free market. We have twenty vendors about and six food trucks. And then her event comes right after, and that will be in this block right here. Our artist needs to start drawing probably, I'm guessing around eleven is what she's telling us to get. It's a little big skate, so.
So, you're looking for blockage for the entire day?
Eleven.
Eleven to ten. Yeah, I would say maybe eleven, so we can tear everything down.
You need, maybe alcohol before, for at eleven start?
Yeah, because she's gonna start drawing. She's not gonna be part of the vendor, she'll just.
So, maybe ten thirty?
Ten thirty, yeah. I mean, and the day his wonderful crew just drop off the barricades right here on Friday, we can.
What kind of arrangements did you make with the credit union for getting through the drive-through? If he blows off this block?
Oh, no, this wouldn't be Tuesday.
Oh, Saturday?
Yes, it's June, Saturday, June tenth.
But people still do use that drive-through, right? For?
Oh, yeah, we could at least, probably, I would say, like where the grass is all torn up in between the two buildings, we could probably use that portion too. I mean, just keep it right there.
Just visit with them and get a plan for those guys.
Are they open on Saturday mornings?
They are.
Um, oh. And if they want to be blocked, don't want us there, you know, we can just start. We're not hard to order.
Okay, okay. We'll see what they say.
Okay.
I don't think it's a big deal for us to have this area.
Does your artist need the street cleaned off prior? These guys get on the streets.
Yeah, we could run a street sweeper or whatever on that block or that.
That would be great, that would really be.
On Friday or whatever, cleaning up a little bit.
And again, that was part of the artist on Main Grant that the chamber received for five thousand. And we had six applicants, she was one. And we dispersed it to six different activities. And if you notice, the mural down Natural Independence. That was part of it, and then little pots that are in front of the lovely vacant buildings that we have on the south side of Main, just to dress them up a little bit as much as we can. So, her project fits in very nice with what we got for our grant, so. That's all we really add, and just invite you to come and enjoy the day with us.
I don't think we need a motion, though, it's.
The only thing I'm curious, if there's a hiccup with the bank tomorrow, you know, we need to reset time or?
I think what I heard them say is that if the bank closes for business by noon and they get hiccups with it, then it sounded like they would be flexible to just go ahead and put the barriers up beginning at noon instead of at eleven.
The hiccup would be if they want accessible drive-through all day long to the drive-through.
For their ATM.
Their ATM, yeah. That's where the hiccup I would see possibly.
Is it possible to move it down the block?
Well, they're going to.
Or the other way, where there's less.
Or could a guy just do the street between four Main and the old Marclan, do the side street or block that way?
Well, we need electricity, so we were hoping that we could. Because we have a DJ. So, we were hoping we could, and if the chamber has to pay, you know, the electricity, does that work in front of the city hall and even though there's an outlet there?
I've never used it.
I'm agree.
It works at Christmas, drive to Christmas lights, but I don't know what the rest of here.
We'll figure it out, but as long as we have your blessing to block off, we'll figure that out.
If you have ours, just.
We just got.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Perfect. So, if we could slide down a little bit, that would be okay?
Sure. You know, you could really power from the library too. It'd be pointing that block.
I was thinking the dirt, the parking lot too. So, we just need power for the DJ or this. So, if you wanna bring your skates or your wheelchair or whatever, anything that appeals, you're welcome.
Sounds fine.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, good luck. All right, looks like that brings us down to reports. Water steward.
Okay, Dave and I had a conversation last week. They started receiving some alarming conditions on our garbage truck related to transmission. Dave had conversations with the appropriate folks to discern what these codes meant. And it looks like it could be a costly repair. However, Dave had the wherewithal to pull, get the records pulled up and stuff. Turns out that it will be covered under warranty. So, they got a work order put in immediately so that it would make sure that it falls under the warranty period. And he's just waiting right now for some timeframe on that. Now, it sounds like the vehicle is usable with that, but there was another failure on it called a metering block that has something to do with the controls with the hydraulics and whatnot. So, Dave has, its dollar amount is low enough that he can just take care of it. As were the parts, those parts, once they arrive, you swap that out real quick. And then it sounds like the truck would still be serviceable until such point that you get.
Yeah, unless, it's got a slight leak right now, unless the leak gets bad enough to where we just have to park it and use the other truck. They figure the transmission repair might take up to a week, depending on what they diagnose or how bad it actually is.
So, right now, no action for the board, but just so you're aware. And that would be all that I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Streets, cemetery.
The only thing I got, Dave called me mid last week, late last week. The crew that is gonna be mobilizing to work on Kelly twenty-seven, the slip, has asked if they could do their batch plant out by the tree area. Or not the tree area, but the, sorry, the grass area, the lagoon area. And the biggest concern that Dave and I go to Saint Martin was coming on, going off, elevator bench, because we repaired both sides, so there's gonna be truck trap on there, obviously. I'm hoping they're gonna go that way instead of to residential, I can't imagine.
Yeah, they've come this way, and I have talked to them since. I told them I'd give them a call tomorrow if you guys approve it. But I told them the commission's concern was damaging transitioning from gravel to pavement. If any damage they do, they would repair.
And Dave and I also talked pictures before and after.
Is it possible to send them to the north in that crossroad?
They could probably run that way too. Like I said, he didn't say when they were setting up or a hundred percent if they got the bid, but I think they did, or whatever, but I'll get more information tomorrow. My biggest concern is if they come in and if they would do damage.
Dave, we may wanna request, if they're verbally agreeing to repairing any damage in that transition?
Get in writing.
Get in writing. Verbally agreeing, what you think might be a couple hundred, turns into a couple thousand.
Other than that, the location is fine. I guess that's our issue.
And if they can use, I don't know, if they can sell them some work ground?
I'd try to get rid of them, nobody wants it.
Or at least have them move it all into one pile?
Yeah, I've talked to them about that, because I said it's one pile in the bin, and he says, well, maybe we can push it. That's a great possibility.
But yeah, that's the only issue that I personally have. I don't have, yeah, just not a motion, just if I had, if we're all okay with it. See any, hell shaking, no.
What's this gonna happen?
I can find out tomorrow when I talk to them. It sounded like they want it to start pretty quick, and I thought it sounded, I don't know, if it's a mill or an overlay or really what they're doing. I did hear from my brother, it was a mill, oh, just an overlay. Just an overlay, no mill.
So, I'm like, they're gonna mill it at all, just overlaying it. But I do know it's the whole.
The whole twenty-seven overlay.
Oh, eighteen oh six oh six.
All right, anything else, streets, cemetery?
We're just busy mowing.
Yeah, yeah.
Speaking of mowing, you see we have an event in the park, in the park over here in the.
Yeah, we're gonna get that mowed just before, that's why I'm letting it get a little shaggy so we don't have to do it right back to back or whatever, so.
Police fire, forestry.
Forestry, I have not heard from Monty whether they have any applicants yet on that. Nothing from the fire department right now. Police did have the task force come conduct another search warrant last week in Haysen. Sounds like Haysen PD was there, maybe it was showing up a little late, from what I've been told, but they were there and helped. Well, they had, that would be.
They had one date, then they switched it. I didn't get that email of the sweep date. Till over the radio traffic, I heard everybody was heading there. And that's when I showed up and helped with the search. Actually transported one to Stan scan.
Okay. Did sound like they did find some stuff, I had not heard how much, if it's large quantities or not, but did they, that's more of a community as far as other than concerned citizens here? That's all I got at the right now.
Thank you. All right, no buster, I'm good. Okay, moving down to eleven A. Propane bids. Mark, can you do those for us, please? And read those two bids out. We only got two, I think in the past we've been getting, I think Federal Gas has been submitting one in the past, but we only got two this time.
First one is Farmers Union Oil Company, and stated June first. And they are quoting a dollar thirty-three per gallon. It is signed, it is a qualifying bid. This one was presented as a qualifying bid as well at one twenty-nine nine per gallon. This would be huge, seven. This one is from Fitter Oil. And they, again, they state that they will go on a monthly statement.
Thank you. I believe our current contract is with Senate or Farmation. All right.
They're both on a monthly bill, right?
They're both on a monthly bill, yes.
Okay, what would the board like to do?
Well, they'd motion, you know, it was less than a dollar, I think, last time we did this. And we go with those bigger fair oil with that one twenty-nine nine.
Motion by?
Second now.
Second by Weidrich, discussion. Roll call. Hack.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Openers says aye. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, spray bids, we don't have a sealed bid, but we did get one bid. And that's from Don Malinsky. And he has been the person that has received a bid the last couple of years. But again, he's the only one. We do have his certificate of liability insurance through Western Frontier Insurance Agency. On this, on this bid, if he broke it out and do several different things, I'll just read them off. The city hall on the water treatment plant, total is two hundred and eighty dollars, and that's over seventeen thousand square feet. Here's the public library, would be a hundred and forty dollars total. Police department would be three hundred and fifty. Heritage Park, four hundred and twenty, and that's fifty thousand square feet. And that's the south, southern main. And then on the north side of Main Street would be a hundred and eighty dollars. Lagoon sells would be two thousand dollars and twenty-six hundred dollars. And that's eighty-six thousand square feet. And then there's an alternate on here. The alternate was for five point two miles along Highway two hundred right of way. Minimum of one application. If we did two, it'd be the same price times two, so it'd be four thousand dollars per application for the five point two miles along Highway two hundred. He also made a note here, I will deduct cost of your chemicals from the total of each unit as used up. So, if he doesn't use all of it, he will deduct. And then he has applicator number and the different chemicals that he'll use. It's the same stuff he's been using in the past for us. So, we need to determine if we wanna go with the alternate and if we wanna accept his vote.
So, this one over here, this total cost is for two sprays by the way.
Correct, yeah.
The line of each and the total cost.
Each and then each and then total, yeah.
Dave, do we still have an inventory of chemical from when we were funding the?
Yeah.
I think he'd be using some of that.
The city has the following chemicals on hand, which would be.
Okay, got it, got it. Very good. Fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
What was the total?
Fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy even for whole, every.
And is that with the alternate too?
And that was at two.
Yeah, two alternates also. Any recollection of what it was last year? We, did we do it ourselves?
No, no.
Not the alternate, the other portion or?
Yeah, it was like three thousand bucks more.
But that alternate stole, they should come through.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think other stuff is, you know, same idea. I myself would like to see the highway right of ways done as well, but.
Make a motion to approve the total cost plus the alternate being sprayed twice for thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. That's where I should've said myself first, I don't see that done, but. So then I guess we don't have anybody else? So then I guess we don't have anybody else over on the crew, I guess that wants to... Dave's talked to those guys, and at this time, nobody, so we bought that nice John Deere with the cap on it for that reason, for safety for the applicator. No applicator. The other discussion. All right, roll call, Hack.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Weidrich, aye. Hack.
Aye.
Stern. Pillar.
Aye.
O'Banour says aye. Motion passed. Uh, nothing on a new bill. Only thirteen public comments. Takes us to approve of bills.
There was a small block, does anybody know this reimbursement lottery, why is it?
For the police department?
Oh, she went and bought stuff for some TSC.
Is this all the bills for the lockdown?
That are here so far, mine is about three, I think there's three or four in there that I gotta talk to them about.
I want to thank Tammy and Angie for getting everything set up for us, technology, paperwork, thank you very much.
Still counting books, so I'm taking minutes just to get them.
Motion approved, is that good?
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call, Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
O'Banour says aye. Motion carried, meaning returned. Thank you.